Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our board meeting. If everyone could please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, well, I hope everyone's staying warm and we have two high school, our high school student representatives with us tonight, which we love hearing from. So, once they come in, I think, Judah, do you let them in? Okay, cool. Thank you. Please bear with us. We're getting there, we promise.
Good evening, everyone, and happy belated new year. We'll start the night talking about our honor societies. The National Honor Society and Science Honor Society are well on their way in reaching their mandatory hours tutoring middle school and high school students in Eastchester. National Honor Society members must reach a total of 10 hours of tutoring by May, and the Science Honor Society members must reach a total of five hours of tutoring. The Row Kappa Social Studies Honor Society is currently planning their main event of the year and looking to get involved in community service as well. They'll most likely be holding a history trivia night in the upcoming months.
EGO has been busy at work preparing for their annual February blood drive. They have coordinated with the Red Cross to schedule the blood drive for February 24th from 10:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. It will take place at the American Legion Hall down the road from the high school. Now more than ever, there is a need for blood transfusions, and I encourage all the board members and everyone listening to donate to this amazing cause. EGO will also be working to bolster school spirit in the next two weeks. Next Thursday and Friday, we are promoting a Jersey Day Spirit Day and encouraging students to show pride in their favorite sports teams as Football Sunday is a day's after. The following Thursday and Friday will be a red pink day so students can get in the spirit for Valentine's Day. Eastchester Model Congress team will be hosting their annual home conference. The team's executive committee has been busy at work preparing for the six-hour-long debate conference in order to provide new and seasoned debaters the opportunity to practice and get feedback on their legislative bills as they head into conference season, with the Columbia Model Congress Conference coming up in March where they will be competing against students from around the country. The Student Athletic Council's Ratty Eagle officers, who during a normal year would be tasked with boosting school spirit at games and leading the Eagle Nation fan section, made posters dedicated to the fall senior athletes along with the help of, sorry, along with the help of the photographer, social media officers, and executive president, which have been hung up all around the high school gym. The posters came out really well, and I would definitely recommend going to check them out after the meeting or when anyone gets a chance. They are also doing senior highlight posts on the Eagle Nation social media account to give the seniors the attention they deserve after going through an unprecedented season.
Dealing with sports, socially distant workouts and outside practice are continuing for students to get into shape. On a positive note, there's some exciting news for the winter team. With the approval of local health authorities, high school sports will be able to resume next week. Many of these students are eager and can't wait for their season to begin. Signups and registration for the winter season will be open till this Sunday. There is also going to be a parent and student athlete meeting this Thursday for more information. The Tri-M music honor society released their holiday music video right before break, and it's currently on YouTube. A link to it can be found on the high school's website. It's definitely worth a watch. Jazco is performing for their night of dance on February 6th, except virtually, of course. They're rehearsing every day of the week and will be recording their show next week to be broadcasted on local news network. The Going Green Club has started a logo-making contest open to the entire school, challenging the students to give creative designs for the club. The winner of this contest will receive a prize. They have also partnered with the Eastchester's Public Library. The children's librarian has set aside environmental-related books that the club will use and create an educational PowerPoint to send to Waverly. This is in hopes to get the kids involved in recycling and helping the environment at a young age. The Spanish club is having their monthly event tomorrow night. They'll be doing a scavenger hunt in Spanish with the winning member receiving a prize. The Italian club will be holding their first-ever virtual neoki-making contest this Friday. Students who are participating in this will receive their own neoki-making board this week and will be taught step-by-step by one of our Italian teachers how to make this delicious pasta.
Members of the Future Business Leaders of America Club went to their first-ever regional competition last weekend virtually. The two students that attended both qualified for the state competition in April. Kelly Austin, a sophomore at Eastchester, placed first in her introduction to public speaking event, and Samuel Schwab, a junior at Eastchester, placed third in his public speaking event. The club's other members are starting to prepare for their state competition in April, and the club is also doing a non-contact chocolate fundraiser to raise money to subsidize the cost of future state and national competition attendance fees. Many of our seniors are anxiously waiting as college early action decisions come back this weekend. Early action is a non-biding decision in which students apply earlier and receive their decision earlier. The second quarter will also be ending this Friday, marking the halfway point in the school year, which is exciting for everyone. Thank you all, and if anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to help take them. If not, have a great night.
Brian, I just wanted to say that if you have the details on the blood drive and you want to send it to me, maybe with the link to sign up, I'd be happy to post that on the Facebook Eastchester community pages. Maybe get a little traffic for you.
Awesome. Thank you. Awesome tonight.
Okay, thanks.
As always, thank you both for all your information. I know I love and everyone else loves hearing about everything that's still going on and all the creative ways you've come up with to continue the traditions here at the school and to make some new ones. So, thank you both very much, and thank you to all the students who are continuing that as well. So, you're always more than welcome to stay, but if you want to scoot out, we will totally not be offended, but you're more than welcome to stay as long or as little as you would like. So, thank you very much. Yes, studying, whatever you want to do. All right, next, I'm going to, does anyone have any board committee reports?
Oh, Rob. So, the Facilities Committee, tonight, before this meeting, we basically got an update and had some discussions on the safety and security bond that we had been debating before COVID took effect, and we would have had a vote on before COVID got involved or arose. And then we also discussed the building condition survey, which is required by the state and updated every five years. So, we are expecting that to be done this, in the next few weeks, and when we get it, we will review it and set future priorities of additional infrastructure needs, of which there are many.
All right, thank you. Were there any other committee reports? All right, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Glass for superintendent's report.
Evening, everybody. We are approaching the end of the first semester, and what a first semester it has been. And so, we're going to touch on a few of the themes and things that we're looking forward to. Before I do that, I'd like to talk about an incident that occurred today that I think most people would be interested to know about that sort of highlights and exemplifies the kind of team spirit we have here in Eastchester. Middle of the day today, we had a van, like a utility van that our operations and maintenance team operates, and it's about a 15-year-old van, and it malfunctioned. It had some sort of an electrical malfunction. The airbags went off. It was inoperable. It was smoking, and it was a scary situation for the driver. So, the driver got on the radio and radioed, and the whole team came and helped, made sure that he was okay, called the fire department. Fire department came, and they all started just pulling all the gear out of the truck just in case it would catch fire, making sure that everybody was clear of it. It all worked out fine. You know, they got all the gear off of it. It was towed and never did catch fire, thankfully, but there was quite a bit of smoke, and it was pretty unsettling. I want to thank Lansford Nelson, Frank Stasola, Anthony Hansen, Eric Volmer, Pete Trapani, Carmine Carlon, August Nardone, and Steve DeLeggi for all rushing in and making sure that everything was okay on our campus, making sure the driver was okay, the vehicle was secured, and most of all, that our students were fine because it was close enough to the building to be of some concern when it occurred. So, I want to thank them. It just exemplifies the kind of team that they are, amazing people. And we're even looking out for all the district's resources by getting everything off the van in case anything would have happened. So, tomorrow, we have our annual fire safety inspection. At 7:00 a.m. it begins, and they will go through the entire district, make sure our buildings are safe and secure from a fire perspective. We have, as Rob mentioned, our building condition survey that is being completed. That's a very important piece. It'll take us out, you know, five years of everything that needs to be done, the current condition of everything, every component in the district from a physical plant standpoint. We are, of course, going through the budgeting process now. You've seen the budgeting timeline. The budgeting, you know, timeline will run out from now until the time it goes to the ballot. We are having individual budget owners, principals, department owners, you know, bringing, starting to talk with us at Central Office about what is needed, about what the needs of their department are. And we've had some good discussions thus far, so we're moving along nicely in that regard. We are, along as we're talking about budget, I will mention and remind everybody that we've had some significant financial challenges this year. We've spent over $600,000 on COVID-related expenses. We budgeted for $400,000, not knowing exactly what that would be, and we expect that those expenses will continue to climb. One of the expenses that we've incurred and that we will want to make sure we don't continue to incur is losses in food service. And it's because of the hybrid model and the volume decline in food sales, especially at the elementary, but across all levels, and really, very few of elementary families are buying any lunch. We're just not able to sustain losses of $100,000 per semester, which is what the losses are accruing to be. So, we will continue to provide free and reduced lunch services to all those who receive them now and who need them in the future. We will have contingency plans for anybody who packs a lunch but it forgets, and they intended to bring their lunch but are unable to. But we are going to, after the February break, be suspending the preparation of lunches here in our current operation. It's just untenable, and we've talked about that for quite some time. So, it's a fiscally responsible thing to do, but it is a difficult decision, and we will make provision for anyone who is in need, absolutely. Along that line, with turning, just for a minute, to just talk about the situation with regard to COVID with hybrid and remote learning, I continue to be thankful for our partnership with our PTAs in terms of helping us understand the needs of our families. Our PTAs at the various buildings and at the council level have been really good about giving us feedback about what, you know, families need and want. We feel like we have a decent handle on that. Nonetheless, we know that it's been really difficult for families who have been unable to send their children, especially their young children, you know, five days a week, as we would all like. We also know that that is a high priority and a strong desire. On the other hand, we're caught with regulations that do mandate six feet, and as I've outlined in communications in great detail, it is for us, our buildings are particularly crowded, and our square footage challenges and our staffing, the cost of added extra staffing makes it very difficult for us to be able to bring students back under these six-foot regulations. And I made some comments in Zoom meetings in the past that I've kind of heard through the grapevine and sort of maybe given people a little bit of concern about, even in the fall, we may be still being hybrid. Now, I want to just kind of clarify that or sort of make clear that in my own mind, I'm planning for the worst and I'm hoping for the best. And I'm seeing some really encouraging signs about the possibility for us to maybe get students back in ways and get back to normal, you know, fairly soon. With that said, there are no guarantees, right? So, if things break badly, then yeah, certainly, we could always continue to be in a hybrid or something like that in the fall, but anything is possible, and I'm seeing for the first time some encouraging signs that we may be able to, we're seeing signs of opening up. We're seeing hospitalization rates go lower. We're seeing infection rates drop. The immunization is taking hold. Many of our staff have availed themselves of that and will continue to do that. And as the vaccine supplies increase, I think we'll be able to see something approaching a fully vaccinated staff. And as that gets out into the general population, that's only going to help our students. We're also getting communication from the CDC that is, you know, advocating and indicating that young children and children may be able to come back. So, we're also getting good indications from our health department. And, you know, our governor just the other day had said some things about sports, where, you know, high-risk sports may be able to come back with guidance from the health department. That was a surprise. So, you know, you can see that there's this acknowledgement that not having our children in school, we all agree, is a great hardship, not only on families, but it's a great detriment, you know, to some students in the way that they learn, particularly at those younger ages, and we need to try to get them back. We have just had real, real challenges in doing that. There are other districts, as we know, who've been able to do that to some extent, but they are the minority. Most districts are in a situation similar to ours. And it all comes down to what you have in terms of square footage and staffing and resources. But we will continue to look at any good option, even to marginally bring our students back for another day or two or a portion of a day or anything we can do, especially our young children. None of things off the table. But in terms of moving forward right now, you know, we're going to continue in the hybrid, fully remote model. But we are hopeful. I am hopeful that at some point very soon, you know, we could see a relaxing of those restrictions. And if and when that happens, we'll take full advantage of that. If we would be allowed to, say, have three to six feet, we'd be in good shape. We'd be able to bring everybody back. You know, we aren't that far from being able to do that, I think. But without any guidance from, with clear guidance from our state and local health department that we're not allowed to do that yet, we're just not in a position to do that. So, I would say to anybody who's, you know, I know many people have reached out to me and will continue to do that, and thank you for that. I would also say, please let your, you know, the governor's office, the health department, the legislature, groups like that know, and let them experience and understand your story about how this is a hardship, because that's going to be an important part in helping them make what is a difficult decision when you're trying to balance with the perception in public safety, you know, against learning, and they're all, it's all very important. So, we will continue to do that, and I am hopeful. I am hopeful, very hopeful. I just don't know when. But as soon as we can walk through that door, we'll walk through that door safely, and we're looking for some guidance. I'm getting some signals for the first time in a long time that we may be, we may be in a place to see some flexibility with these guidelines. And with that, I'm going to just say one more thing about learning gaps. Had some nice communication with some of our PTA council leaders today. And one of the things that we know is that students are experiencing, some students, not all students, but some students in this remote, hybrid, online experience, it has been a little bit difficult. There could be some learning gaps. And what we're doing is we're planning to prioritize English, language arts, and math and continually assessing students as to where they are in relation to where they might be expected to be. We do that with a series of assessments, some of them standardized, some of them not standardized. But we look at each individual student, and when we, we know that at the end of this school year, particularly, while we are taking steps to make sure that we close gaps all the time, but if we find some gaps persist into the summer, you know, we're making some plans to be able to provide some special programming, some special summer school experiences, you know, to help with that. But it'll be based on the data with individual students who need additional levels of support. And so, you'll be getting some more communication from me on this, along perhaps with some articles and other things to help people understand the context, because certainly, we are not alone in struggling with this. I mean, this is something that every school in the country is really struggling with. And so, there's been a fair amount written about it, what those gaps mean and what they really mean, and how alarmed should we be or not be. There are some different sides to that argument that I think are important to understand, to get a balanced perspective. We'll be giving that to families here in the next week or two, and then we'll be doing some surveying around there, you know, for some reactions to not just the articles, but letting you know what our plans are for closing gaps as we get into the summer, and then, you know, assessing how people feel, you know, about that and about getting some sense of how things are going for families at this point, right, so that we know how to meet their needs for the second semester. So, thank you for your patience. I know it was a rather lengthy report, but there's a lot going on, and I felt that it was important to cover those things.
Thank you, Dr. Glass. Before we move on to the rest of the meeting, I just wanted to let people know that if they're asking questions in the Q and A or in the chat, we're not ignoring you. It's just that at the end of the meeting, when it's time for the public to speak, you can raise your hand and we can try to get you in. Or if we can't get you in for some reason, you can type the question in the chat. We could read it out loud. And if it is something that we are able to answer at this time, we will be able to answer you. And if it's not something that we're able to answer, we will ask that you please give us your email address, and we can get back to you with an answer at a later date, which is the process that we have for all of our board meetings, so we're going to stick with that. So, again, I don't want you to think that we're ignoring you. We see it. But when it comes time at the end of the meeting, we also have people who came out tonight in the 20-degree weather, so they will actually go first if they want to speak, and then we will call on the people at Zoom. And if we can't answer, we will be able to do that. So, once again, people who are putting things in the chat, we are not going to answer them now. It is a question that we will be answering later on, and we are going through all the process that if you raise your hand, we will call on you. You can ask a question, and if you can't be called on or let into the meeting, then we will try to have you type the question, not at that portion of the meeting right now. So, with that said, we are on to discussions, special presentations, and is that going to you? Back to you, Dr. Glass?
No special presentation.
Okay, cool. Thank you. So, at this point, Rob, would you like to approve six? Oh, okay. Would you like to approve six through nine, Rob?
Sure. So, I move the approval of the minutes for the January 12th, 2021 Board of Education meeting, regular meeting. I move approval of the personnel agenda as attached. I move the committee on preschool special education. I move approval of the treasures reports, approval of the amendment of the licensing agreement with Christian Apostolic Church, approval of the maintenance agreement with B and B Fitness and Flooring, and that's it.
All right. Vito, can I have a second for that?
I don't know if I'm muted or not.
That's okay.
I'm second.
Okay, thank you, Vito. Is there any discussion on these? I should have pulled mine. Judah?
I just had a quick question. One of the, one of the things we're approving the board personnel agenda is a change to the science club stipend because of her retirement. Are we looking for a replacement science advisor for that science club? Do we know?
My understanding, yes.
Okay.
Yes, we are. We haven't found one yet.
We're not hearing you, Scott. Hang on.
Can you hear me now? Excellent. Yes, we are looking for a replacement. We just have not appointed one yet.
Okay. I didn't know if it was just a timing thing or if we're still looking. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, next, Tara, if you could, I'm sorry, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, Tara, if you could please do 10? You got to unmute yourself, yeah.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the attached policy number 1510, Public Use of School Facilities. The Policy Committee, in collaboration with the administration, presented for first reading at the January 12th Board of Education Work Session, the proposed policy 1510. The policy would create guidelines for use of district facilities. One important benefit of having this policy will be the ability to begin using electronic reservation system for all groups seeking to use district facilities. The administration asked that the board members please continue reviewing the policy and provide any input or direct any questions about the policy to the superintendent on the January, prior to the January 26th board meeting, as the administration will be conducting a second reading followed by the above resolution to adopt the policy.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the attached technology vision for Eastchester Union Free School District.
Okay, Steve, would you like to second those?
I second.
Okay, discussion. Cheryl?
I just wanted to say I'm impressed with the technology vision statement, and I wanted to thank everybody who was involved in that committee, all the students or the staff, parents, board members, Judah, and administrators. I think, I hope that it's a useful tool for mobilizing resources that are needed to continue to upgrade and improve technology and for teaching and learning in the district. So, thanks to everybody who is involved. It's great. And it'll be on the website soon. So, people should check that out, the technology vision statement.
Yeah, I just want to go back to the policy that I had commented on the last time about fraternal organizations, and I reread it a little more closely, not in this environment, but in a quiet environment. And please just correct me if I interpreted incorrectly. Correct me. What I read is that any social civic organization can use it provided that any money raised goes to a charitable endeavor, and the restriction was that they can't use it for their own gain. So, in other words, going back to my original scenario, the Lions could continue to host their pancake breakfast that they have in Hutchinson, and the money goes to some, you know, to Helen Keller blind whatever charity. Okay, just wanted to make sure that that was, we weren't changing anything like that, so, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, the next is our future meeting dates. We have a meeting on February 9th, and then February 23rd and March 9th. We're moving forward. So, at this point, we have So at this point, we have, the next part of the meeting is comments for the public. We do have some people here. Did anyone here want to comment? I'm not forcing you to, just wanted to give you the opportunity. Nope? Okay, so please bear with us. I'm gonna just, at this point, we are, I do know that there's some questions in the question and answer, and I do know that there's, did you want, okay, sure. Did you want to just give your name and your, actually, can go right over there and then state your name and your address? Yep, it's just, yep, the public has to hear it. And then it, you could just on your way back, if you want to just give me your email and your name and stuff, so you don't have to say it for everyone watching, because some people are watching on Zoom. And I mean, on YouTube or a thing, and it's more than the people who are just here. I don't want you to have to give your email out for that.
I just had two questions, actually. Are there three seats? How many seats are? How many, the Board of, are there three seats up for the? Okay. Oh, okay.
So in response to your question, and it was one of the questions answered on the chat as well. Every year, since it's a Board of Nine, there are three seats that are up for election. Yes, for a three-year term. Unless you have a special election, an extra open seat. So every year, there's, there's three seats for three-year terms.
Got it. Okay, thanks. And actually, my other question was?
I'm sorry, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna expand on that answer just a little bit. So in order to run, you just have to get a petition. And I don't think we know yet what the exact number of signatures that you need are. You submit the petition timely, and then that's how you get on the ballot.
We need 54 signatures this year. Hi, I just did the calculations today. We need 54 signatures based upon the number of votes from the last election. And the petitions are available at the Central Office Reception Desk. They just, yes, today I finished them, yes.
Oh, okay, perfect. And where do you get that, the four to that?
In the hours of 8:04.
Plan for, is there anything on the table to get these kids back in school every day? You know, and I don't know, I think, I think I saw something tonight that the CDC is encouraging schools to go back. So many of our neighbors, neighboring towns, across Long Island, of comparable size are all in school every day.
So at a meeting, we don't generally engage in dialogue and question and answer with a comment, and they get back to you at a later time. However, I don't want to be rude, and I don't want to, you know.
Well, yeah, because you said it before, and I just missed.
It's a fairly easy question to answer, so. You can get 12. Size of the classroom, 12, 13 students in a classroom. So that's a health regulation. Now, we want to use gyms.
Well, I think a lot of them have worked on it throughout the whole summer to go hit the ground running in September.
Yes. We have.
Then you have to ask yourself, where do all these students come from? And maybe you should have a re-registration of everybody and work on the people that really, you know, unfortunately, kids that live in town that need to be educated. I mean, they all do. But at the end of the day, you know, it's probably a good idea, other districts do this as well, where they go through a registration process every year. I would challenge you on that. I would challenge you on that.
Happy to have that discussion.
You mean to tell me every year, kids come in? Okay, yeah. Well, I mean, I've asked you three times. But sure, I'll do it again.
I think we're good. We're here. We don't have anyone else that would like to speak here. So if you would like to ask, we're not, if you'd like to, again, this is not a back and forth. So if you have a statement you would like to say, or you have a question, we can take it. And then you can privately message me your email if you'd like, and we can get back to you. If you would like to speak, please use the raise your hand feature, and someone will let you in the meeting. Is that, is no one? I can't tell. Oh, there is one?
Oh, there it is.
So I'm gonna put mine up so we can hear her. Alice, I think it is?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna mute myself, and I have this it-on speaker here, so we can hear you here, just so you know. Okay?
Okay. So I just want to make a statement that I think that what was stated at the PTA Council meeting in regards to going back, I mean, we're talking about a January meeting, and Dr. Glass spoke of returning to a full five-day-a-week schedule for, for November was completely, I, I mean, the anxiety that it produced throughout many, many parents in the district was, was ridiculous. And we're, we're getting vaccinated, we're, I mean, high hopes of like, it was just, it was so out of touch with what is being, what's happening in the world right now. And it's, it's just not fair to do that to parents. And we deserve more than that. We've changed nothing in, in our plan since August. We haven't gone back, we haven't even evaluated if Wednesdays can be used to, to have the children go back on Wednesdays and to, you know, you know, vice versa, A cohort, B cohort, whatever it might be. I mean, we've changed nothing. And the only reason, from my understanding, is that the IEP children were, were brought in only two weeks ago was due to a lawsuit against the district. So we've done nothing different since August. And that, to me, is unacceptable. We, we, you know, the Plexi, I mean, the fifth grade class at Greendale is up to 19 children. So if you can accommodate 19 children, why cannot, why can't we accommodate more than what we have? I mean, it's, it's crazy. Nothing has changed since August. And I find that to be, for the taxes we pay, for the credits that we, like, you know, we, we praise ourselves on an amazing district with, you know, a great school board, a great district. We've done nothing different. And to me, that is awful. And I'll be honest with you, I called multiple times this week and last week about the Board of Ed positions that are available in June, and they told me to call back in June. I called four different people. I called Human Resources. I spoke with the receptionist. I called multiple people, and I was blown off about how to proceed with the Board of Ed positions that are going to be available. And I really don't think that Dr. Glass, and I, you know, you know, we can say things have gone smoothly, but we've changed nothing. We have tried to do nothing to get these children into school. We haven't surveyed to say, is this working for your child? Because my second grader, it's working. Remote is working for her. She can do hybrid, and it is working. She's excelling every single day. My third grader is suffering every single day doing remote. My fourth grader has an IEP, so he was introduced to the four days a week. We haven't surveyed people to say, do you want to send them back? Would you be willing to, to stay on hybrid while we accept children who are suffering mentally? And, and, and families are suffering, whether it might be that they can't go to school, or, or they can't go to work, or they can't do, you know, provide for their families. We need a change, and saying that we're going to think about it is not, is not acceptable. We're better than that. We pay way too much tax to say we're going to think about November. Because November is off, Dr. Fauci said, normalcy will happen in November or in the fall. So how can we, as a district, say that this is okay? That in November, we're going to go back to normal? We can do better. We, I would like us to, I know there's a hybrid committee. I would like to have a committee that wants to have the children to go back. And I would like the district to try, you know, you have a hybrid committee, a remote committee. What about a committee that says, we want to get these kids back to school? Maybe the, maybe the parents need to pay for the Plexi or the additional cost, or whatever it might be, to get these children back to school. Certain kids are excelling and doing fine, and I, I'm, I can attest to it. My second grader in Ms. Gurken's class is doing phenomenal. Her math scores, reading, she's excelling. My third grader, who is a brilliant boy, is crying every day. Hate school now. This is not acceptable. We have to help these kids that are truly suffering. And, and for the parents that can't go to work. We have to do something different as a district. I'm sorry, I, I'm.
Okay, this is not how these meetings operate. And we've been very courteous, and when people come in. Okay, I'm not going to argue with you. What I'm saying is, we've let her go for more than three minutes. I was gonna ask her to finish up, but thank you for interjecting and letting me run the meeting, okay? No need to get like that. You're not, but it's not time to defend someone. Alice, would you like to make a few more statements before we move on to someone else? I appreciate your time to come to the meeting and speak. We have a three-minute time limit. I was just gonna say, thank you for your time, Alice, if you wanted to say anything else before we moved on.
No, I, I just, I really want, I really feel that we need to do more. I, our plan has not changed since August. The IEP children were brought in, from my understanding, to, due to a lawsuit. I'm thankful for the person who did it, because my fourth grader is benefiting from it. My second grader, if you told me, who would, who would benefit, like, my second grader, I wouldn't send her four days if there was kids that were suffering that needed to go back. My third grader is, is at his wits' end. We're, we're, we're talking about going to psychologists and, and what's going to happen to his future, because he cannot stay on a computer and learn. And he's a brilliant boy. And I'm only speaking on my, my side. I know all these parents. Everyone has a different situation. And if we can bring 19 students into a fifth grade class into Greendale, we can do better. And, and the, and the plan has not changed since August. We need to make changes, and I would like Dr. Glass to approve a board or a committee where we can get these kids back to school. I don't want to talk about hybrid learning. I want to talk about us getting our children back to school five days a week. That's it.
Thank you, Alice. I appreciate you coming and taking the time, and especially speaking about your situation personally. I know that can't be the easiest thing. So thank you for taking the time. We hear you, and I, I, we appreciate it. Stay warm and have a nice Thursday evening. There's other people that have their hand raised. We're not, we're not taking questions in the chat, but if you would like to speak, we're more than happy. It's about a three-minute limit, give or take. We obviously are, understand the situation and have it a little longer like we have all year. So Judah, or whoever is able to let the next person in.
Robert Krokowski, you should be on now.
Yes, hi, Dr. Glass and Sally. Just a couple of comments. I think I'd like to iterate a lot of what Alice said. I agree. We have a daughter who's in first grade, a son who will be going to kindergarten next year. We, you know, we, we don't say this lightly, right? We know a bunch of administrators in other school districts, whether it's principals, assistant principals, superintendent, teachers in Long Island, Westchester, New York City districts, you know, let alone people we know in Jersey and other states, but just in our state and even in our local area, all of these school districts have found ways to do different things to increase the time that their kids are at school live. Whether that's rearrange the classrooms, or that's taking bookshelves out, whether that's removing, you know, different desks and just finding creative ways. Some of them did it all summer long to previous points. Some of them have started doing it, you know, between the fall, over, over winter break and, and now. And kids are going back more often. And, you know, fortunately for us, we're in a financial situation. We can help supplement our daughter's learning, but we're spending over $1,000 a month sending her to A-Game Sports to be able to do her virtual learning, so she gets social interaction. We've hired a tutor, because we think the curriculum this year is really subpar to where it was last year. We look back at the work she was doing in kindergarten, and it was far more than what she's doing now in first grade. So I don't want my child to fall back nationally where other first graders are, right? We, and, and we're not trying to push her to the extreme, but we just want her to learn. She's a child that loves school, loves the social interaction, loves learning, and we see that diminishing. And to, to feel like we wouldn't be back full-time starting next year in the fall is, is really, really, you know, it's something that we just, we can't, you know, we can't support and accept. We're working at home right now. My wife's back at work. We're trying to figure it out, but we, we, we need, our son cannot go in a hybrid. He will never sit down on a computer in kindergarten in a hybrid role. So that's not even an option. So I wanted to echo a lot of the same comments. I, I don't, I feel like knowing that Waverly School District and look what those classrooms look like, I, you know, I feel like there's room to. I, you know, I feel like there's room to remove a lot of those desks, remove the lockers, remove the art, you know, space in the back. You could fit more children there, um, and, and try to have more kids go live. I just, I don't feel like a lot of that has been evaluated, or maybe it has, but we don't get a lot of real answers. We get, we looked at that and we didn't want to do this, you know, we looked at that, we didn't want to do that. Like, but now I feel like we're at the point where the data's in, the transmission is not being spread at school. You know, the kids are, are suffering from a learning perspective. We just wanted to echo our comments that we really want to see the district. You know, whatever they have to do, double down, do different surveys, invest in Plexiglas, survey the parents, you know. I'm happy to pay, you know, money to, to support that. But we haven't got any of those, any of those types of asks or surveys. And, well, I think we're at a critical time period now where the country's gonna start getting vaccinated. Teachers will start getting vaccinated. We need to make sure that where no rock is, you know, on turn to make sure. It's can start, hopefully go back more than they are this year, and definitely at the start of next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. And if you'd like to, sorry, I'm like echoing myself. I sent a message, but if it, if you would like to send your email address to us for a follow-up, if you'd like to have a con, another conversation. If you hit all, if you put in the chat to all, all panelists, not to everyone, then we'd be able to see it. Or you could always email any of us. I mean, I'll give, you can email me. I think you guys know my, the school email address. So if you'd like that as a follow-up to speak to one of us, please put it in the chat to all panelists. And then we can follow up with you on that as well, just so you don't put it out to all board, um, all, everyone. So the entire community or the people on here don't see it. So I think that there's another, um, another person who'd like to come in.
Yes, hello, this is Tara Tracy. I live in Tuckahoe and my child goes to Waverly kindergarten. I want to, um, you know, really commend the teachers for doing double duty, doing the online teaching. As well as in the classroom. However, I, I just have to agree. I had not heard the November possibility until tonight, and I just, that's, that's unacceptable. We've, we've really, um, been tolerant for so long. And, um, that, I, I just even to have that put in the universe is really hard to hear. I do have to reiterate, uh, what Alice said about the need to revisit the Wednesdays being fully remote. At least that's how it is at Waverly. I think that that could be restructured. You know, when these decisions were made in August and the parents agreed, we didn't, the, the, the situation was very different then. Um, and I think it is important for us as parents to see, you know, what brainstorming is being done. What really is being done to maximize student learning? Because with a kindergartner, so much of their learning is about social, um, emotional development. And they need to be together in person to do that. It's just absolutely critical for the kindergartners, first graders. And you know, I, I do think a reassessment is important, and I had been waiting and waiting for the Google Doc. Feedback survey, hoping that I could give, you know, feedback. But that survey was only, you know, will you continue hybrid or will you do fully remote? There was no feedback option at all. And it, that was actually quite infuriating because the patients have, I'm sorry, the parents have been quite patient. And, um, you know, we're all in this together and we know that it involves sacrifice. But now the data has really changed with children and transmission. And also the real need to get children back in school, um, as soon as possible. So I came to this meeting thinking there would be possibilities discussed about the spring. Or even the summer, um, doing, you know, half-days or just really maximizing time. Where the students can be together. And so I'm really shocked and alarmed to hear the possibility of November. Um, that, that just cannot be, and I think that parents should be notified of, of this plan. If that's the plan immediately, so that we can organize and make our voices heard. Um, thank you.
Tara, thank you very much. Before, um, we, um, Dr. Glass is going to. But before he responds, I just wanted to say that, um, if you'd like to, Robert, I emailed you and Allison and Tara. If you want to email us to all panelists, if you wanted to have a follow-up email, a phone conversation, I'm not forcing you to just hit all panelists. And then your email won't go out, it'll be ten years. But, um, I think I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Glass.
Typically, if there's some clarification needed, that, that, you know, I, that's when I would, would jump in. Um, and so I'm just want to be very clear because of the last comment that was made in November. And I, this thing's getting legs. It's getting a life of its own. And if I, I must be responsible for that because at the meeting. That, that we're referring to, I was sort of trying to manage expectations. And it probably was a pretty tone deaf comment on my part. I wasn't trying to be insensitive to say, hey, we could be like this. You know, we're gonna be like this into the fall. But, you know, it is, all things are possible, right? And I was in that moment trying to just make sure that people understood a certain aspect that this is, that this can go on. If I could reel that comment back in, I, I think, you know, I have, I don't expect us to be in September, October, November. Having to live with the same regulations and guidelines and, and being not fully in. If I were, you know, predicting, which I think is very dangerous in this environment. But if I were predicting, I would say it's a good likelihood, we could be, you know, we could be back to normal. So please don't, uh, think that what I'm saying is, is that I expect to be back in hybrid in the fall. I can't predict what's gonna happen in the fall. Look what's happened just in the last nine, 10 months, and that's another nine, 10 months away, nine months away. So I predicting, just please, please, let's not, I want to be very clear. Let's not, I'm not saying. You know, prepare for this to go on and on and on and on. Let's just be clear about that. What I am saying is I want the students back in desperately. And, um, we just have to abide by the guidelines and, you know, I'm not gonna get into all the other points here that were raised. But I will try to respond to each of you individually and put out some communication in general to address some of the things that were bothering.
Thank you. And it seems that we've gotten the perception is becoming a upsetting reality. It's not necessarily reality, but where people are saying, people are thinking it's reality. So sorry if there was any miscommunication on that, um, portion. There, at this point, um, does anyone have their hand raised there? I'm gonna surf, there's one more. Oh, she can go. Oh, I didn't see it. I'm sorry. Oh, hold on, sorry. Chrissy, hold on.
Go ahead, Chrissy.
Okay, um, hi, everyone. I just want to, um, support and, and thank you, Alice and Robert. And Tara for speaking tonight. And, um, not that I have so much to add, but what I want to say is that. I just want you to know, it's not like those three parents who feel this way. There are many, many, many parents who feel this way. And we really haven't had an opportunity to, uh, discuss that. Because there really hasn't been, um, any meetings to discuss this. There are like the Board of Ed meetings where we make statements, but there's really been no way for us to discuss this. There's really been no surveys, um, like Alice was saying about how this is going for our kids. And, um, I, I have to say, I mean, just for myself. I have three kids and they are in three different schools in Eastchester, Waverly and Hutchins Middle School. And all three of them are suffering in different ways. Who is getting depressed? Who is anxious? Who is crying every time they have to get on Zoom and who's not learning? And it's, it's, all these kids are really suffering. And, um, and I just want to reiterate that our surrounding towns, Tuckahoe, Bronxville, Scarsdale. They're all doing more than us. Um, they, they are thinking outside the box. They're still following the guidelines, but they're using other things like Plexiglas. Um, utilizing the gym, the cafeteria, they're thinking outside the box. And we are not, we are staying the same. We are not moving forward at all. We're not using the Wednesdays. Um, and it's really, really frustrating. And, um, I just want to say that. That so many people feel this way. I don't want you to think that it's those, you know, just the people who are speaking tonight. And if we could have some sort of meeting or some sort of survey so that we could have our voices known. The CDC recommended today that students be back in school. So I just, again, I just want to say, could we please have a meeting or survey or something so that we can discuss this? This is really, really frustrating that we're not moving forward. And, uh, please understand that I think most parents feel that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me, I'm not going on myself. Thank you very much, um. Chrissy and everyone that spoke. Is there another person that raised their hand to speak at this point? I can't see it. I don't know why I'm having a hard time. Okay, well, thank you very much. We appreciate the feedback and the, and the, um, information. I know that when we had a meeting earlier and how, uh, Chrissy was saying they're not the only three or four spoke there. We do know, we re, uh, you know, we had the meeting, I remember the, from the meeting earlier and also, um. With that, so I appreciate that, especially since parents are sharing their personal stories. I know that cannot be easy to discuss that. Before we close the discussion, um, did you last chance? Petitions need to be submitted by, hold on. I'll, I'll ask the, um, hold on. Jeanette, do you know offhand when the petitions need to be submitted by?
April nineteenth.
Hold on, hold on, sorry.
April nineteenth.
April nineteenth, and the election's in May, so probably close to a month after that is when the election would be. The election would be for the trustees and the budget at the same time. So you vote on both of them. Three weeks after. The petitions are due about a three weeks or a month before. Okay, so with that said, do we have any comments?
Sally, I just wanted to clarify something if I might. Okay, so I just wanted to speak about a statement that was made earlier about, um, IEP students that were brought in because of a lawsuit. Brought in extra days because of a lawsuit, that that is not accurate.
All right, thank you, Norine. I appreciate that feedback and clarification.
I would, I would also like to add to that, that there was a, a lawsuit nationally. Every school district in the United States was named in a class action lawsuit along the lines of. Meeting students IEP needs in this COVID environment, making the case that they were not being met. That was shared with this board, that was, and legal counsel has weighed in. We, we've not been particularly specifically, you know. Named any more than that. So, yeah, and that, so. Yes. Well, we were, we were, all school districts were specifically named. Our advice from our attorney was, you know. This was going to, because it was so large, was gonna be.
If I remember correctly, Eastchester wasn't named in that.
It never actually served. Every district in the country was named in the one lawsuit.
Okay.
And it never went anywhere because it was too broad a lawsuit. We were never actually served. It didn't guide our thinking one way or the other.
Well, the fact is it did not guide any decisions that were made.
To, to follow up on what Dr. Ursula said, because. It's understandable where one would have heard rumor of, of a lawsuit, and in fact, there was this large class action lawsuit.
At this point, we're to the part of the agenda for comments for the Board of Education. Would anyone like to? Comment at anything? Jude, if you do unmute yourself.
Well, I'm, I'm struggling with how, how I want to say this. I, 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 I just, you know, I'm seeing comments here talking about Florida and Tuckahoe and Scarsdale and Bronxville. There was a conversation early on that talked about. The differences between our district and those other districts. Every district is really unique and has to deal with the footprint of the district. And I hope that people understand that to some degree, you know, that's part of what's going on here is we're, we're not Tuckahoe, right? Tuckahoe is a much smaller sc, uh, school district with a much different real estate footprint that may be able to accommodate the. The Department of Health requirements differently the weekend. I also want to say, as I look around the room, right, that most of the board members here have kids in the district, right? We understand the challenges that this brings. I know a lot of the teachers have kids in the district. Or have kids in other districts that have similar situations. This is not some sort of conspiracy to try and avoid your kids coming to school. This is the world we're in, and we're all doing the best we can to make possible the best education we can. I, I like the ideas that came up about more surveys and forums. I hope we'll pursue that. Cause I think, you know, the community can help with ideas to make this better. But we've got thirty-two hundred or so kids in the district, and, you know. Presumably from about eighteen hundred or so families that are all trying to navigate just in Eastchester. And then nationally, as you can hear from lawsuits that are national lawsuits, you know, every situation is unique. Every situation is different. And while I know it's scary to think about the possibility. That in the fall, we may still be talking about hybrid, and as much as I hope that that's not the case, and we all hope that's not the case. And we all hope that we can do it sooner even than, than that. It's not irresponsible to prepare for that possibility. So I think that was, and I'm not trying to speak on your behalf, but my impression is, is that. It started off as a conversation about preparing for that possibility and evolved into some kind of. Uh, fear of a promise that we're not gonna be back in school until next November.
Yeah, in fact, to, just to clarify what it was.
My parent had said, you know. What, what else? Right? What if you have to live with this again? Can you find a solution?
Solution at that time was to.
Like that's where I would have to go at that point. Regulations don't change, right? My, my argument against that is.
You, you know, if it persists in the fall, it's not likely to persist.
You would have to make now and portable classrooms and things like that would be so astronomical and such a lift. That by the time you've got to the fall, in preparation for that, it could be money wasted.
Be money wasted, but that was the context.
If you have to live with this in the fall, right? And so thank you for that.
The, the other comment I'll make, just an aside note, is there were some questions about vaccinations. I know some people who've been successful at getting vaccinations. I know some people who have been less than successful at getting a vaccination, vaccination. Are we taking, and I know we actually tonight approved something related to teachers being able to take time off for vaccinations. Or, or use, you know, sick time for vaccination. Do we have a, a, are we keeping track of the teachers who've actually been vaccinated at any, at any point?
We are not specifically taking names for people who've been vaccinated. However, we're working with the Health Department and they're trying to prioritize. And assess the number of, um, teachers who may still, you know, want a vaccine and can't get one. Uh, as of yesterday, um, uh, that was about ninety-two staff members. Who want one and can't get one, you know, within the next two or three weeks.
So that number then was given to the Health Department.
And they will try to find a way for us to get those ninety-some people. And they will try to find a way for us to get those ninety-some people vaccinated. Site here, we're opening up a special site for them to go to or whatever it takes. They'll do what they can.
Thanks, Sally. Uh, I want to thank all the parents um, for joining the meeting tonight and speaking their truths. I think, uh, I, I really, I want to echo also what you said, Judah. I think that the ask for greater, you know, communication, to over communicate, uh, greater transparency about the decision-making process. I do know in the fall, we put out, the district put out a fact sheet about all the different, um, you know, options that were being pursued or looked at in terms of trying to get more kids back in school. And I, you know, I think it's maybe time to, to open up more avenues for information sharing um, on both sides and, and civil conversation. And you know, we're, we really want to, we're, we're in it together. I think the board, the administration and the community, we want to work together. So I, I just want to say thank you for those suggestions to the community members that made those suggestions. And um, I'm happy to participate in any way I can.
Anyone else? Vida.
You know I have to say something. And I just want to speak to all the parents who, who said something and say, for the most part, I agree with almost everything you've said. And I'm speaking for myself, not for my fellow board members, but I'm sure many of them feel the same way. That if we could have every kid back in school tomorrow morning, we would, okay? None of us like the hybrid situation. To quote a famous movie line, and I won't say what movie it is, the line in the movie is, "This is the life we chose." When two people were discussing something that they don't like that's going on. Well, the fact of the matter is, this is not the life we chose. This is the life that was handed to us. There are rules, there are regulations, there are facilities limitations. There's all sorts of variables going on. And for my part, I would open tomorrow, but we can't. And all I could say is that we're going to keep asking the right questions and the administration is going to be keeping, asking the right questions to open as soon as we can safely under the rules that are given to us. And any other districts that you might hear that are open, they are being opened under the rules that were given to them, which are the same rules that apply to us. Because their facilities are different, they have a different outcome. But bottom line is, we're going to open as soon as we can, I hope.
All right. Thank you, Vida. I appreciate that. And I appreciate everything that's been said tonight. Again, I'd like to echo what the other board member said. We appreciate you coming to us. We are all in this together. Hearing information like this is um, good for us to hear because it'll open up discussions about other things as well. So we appreciate the feedback. Again, um, we do have a Board of Ed email. I can tell you I do spend time on the phone and via email and Zooms with many people in town and I'd be more than happy to. And I'm sure many other board members will, would as well. And you know, we're each on a committee and a PTA and we do attend the PTA meetings or the council meetings or a sports club meeting or committees that we are in. Most board members have children in the school that you um, probably know them from that aspect as well. So we did run to serve the community. And um, like Judah said, there's thirty-two hundred students and that's thirty-two hundred families about, give or take in town, a little less than that since there's multiple children. But um, we're here to help and work together. So that's something that I would like everyone to please remember. So thank you very much for your time. We really do appreciate it. I do think that we are going to, um, this will open up some more dialogue and conversations on what is needed. And um, we appreciate the time that you took to come out. Either came here tonight person since it's cold and/or spent time tonight away from your family on a Zoom. So we do appreciate that at this time. So um, do I have a motion? Are we going into executive session? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn Cheryl and Erin to second it and all in favor? All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.